Hi, down there.
How are you?
I'm good.
You?
Good.
Love it.
We don't see each other.
I know.
What's the week?
I saw you more last year.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the May 14th, 2012 Waschuggal City Council Workshop. Rose, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Russell. Councilmember Plinsky.
Here.
Councilmember Granley.
Here.
Councilmember Lindsay.
Here.
Councilmember McDaniel. Councilmember Shoemaker.
Here.
Councilmember Crain.
Here.
Thank you. I know councilmembers McDaniel and Russell sent us notes that they would not be in attendance this evening. Are there any members of the public that would like to address council this evening before we get started? Okay. Seeing none at the moment. We're going to move right into a presentation by CREDC, our Columbia River Economic Development Council. Lisa, thank you for being here this evening.
My pleasure. Thank you, guys. I have copies of my presentations, so you don't need to take notes if you want to. And I have a few extras, but then I will use you. So, thank you for inviting me this evening.
Thank you.
I'm here to talk with you about the strategic plan for the CREDC. And those of you who have already heard this a few times, I'll apologize in advance. So, we're going to talk about the strategic plan, not just what's in it or how we came to that plan. I'll go over a little bit to move the data, just the key points, but also what we're planning to do about the plan. So, we commissioned this plan about a year and a half ago, and last summer it was accepted by the CREDC, knowing that we needed to do something different in the future than we had done in the past regarding economic development. So, most of our visions of recovery from this recession really looked like we thought it would simply be a return to 2004, 2005, when things are doing great. And yet, everyone kind of also knew in the back of their minds that that was not a possibility. And even if it were a possibility, it might not have been such a good idea. Those sectors that we were relying on, particularly home construction, really were not sustainable. So, that bubble burst, and we're here trying to figure out what to do next. We also knew that we needed to embark upon more efforts to get our part of the knowledge-based economy. We'll talk more about that later. But we also know that that requires greater levels of education. And we knew that manufacturing had been changing. What we hadn't really understood was that nationally, since 1979, the manufacturing industry has lost jobs in the United States. Now, we saw a bubble in our part of the world in the 90s, when we saw upwards of $13 billion of new investment in the semiconductor industry in our region in the 90s. So, that changed that number substantially for us. However, it's still been going down here, and it's not because just that jobs are going to China, it's because of automation. So, we're manufacturing more stuff than ever before in our region, but with far fewer people. So, we'll talk about that a little bit more later. I want to emphasize at the outset, however, we are not leaving our commitment to the manufacturing industry. We just know that we need to add to it in order to have a healthy economy in our region. So, each recession has taken longer than its predecessor recession, for the most part, to recover. And so, this part goes to the end of 2010. We're probably looking at recovery somewhere not too far from your penultimate hanging. So, we know that full recovery in terms of jobs is still quite a way out, based on the depth and breadth of this recession. The 2008 recession in terms of local unemployment was really a challenge. So, that bottom line that you see there is Portland. That is the toll that the recession took on jobs in Portland, recovering pretty quickly. The blue line you see is Clark County. Now, this is about where the jobs are located, not about where the people are located. So, a lot of the people affected by that red line, about 20% of Portland's labor force lives in the state of Washington. So, it's been a problem for us. Now, this is employment by industry over time, and that red line that you see is again in Clark County. The red line you see is manufacturing going down. You see other industries going up. However, we wanted to look at that based on population, not just based on the raw number of jobs over time. So, the next slide, if I'm lucky. Whoops, I guess it doesn't. I'm sorry. There's another slide in there. Okay, I'm in trouble. How did I go backwards?
You should be able to tap on the other side.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing. Well, I think I would do that. Okay. I believe the slide is in your packet. You have one that talks about jobs.
I think it's different analysis.
No, well, it's a serious problem. Well, what you see is that all of the sectors, oh, you don't see.
Tell you, technology is going to get us.
Government, education, leisure, all of those sectors are essentially flat, in terms of the number of jobs per 100 people. But the manufacturing line goes precipitously down, in terms of the number of jobs per 100. I apologize for that. And Dave, I will get you that slide, so that your life is complete. Unemployment, however, in our part of the region is very frightening. So, most of those lines down there are the workforce areas of the state of Washington, and that blue line up there is us. And I think that we all recognize that unemployment in our region was very high, but we had no idea. We were so far outside the norm, we thought things were just as bad everywhere else. The pink dotted line you see there is the Portland metropolitan area. And so, that pink dotted line includes us. So, if you took us out of their numbers, they'd be even further into that middle pack. So, Southwest Washington's unemployment rate is about 35%, 40% higher than the rest of the state of Washington and the rest of the Portland metropolitan area. The jobless burden is really hardest hitting on people who have no high school diploma. So, prior to the recession, there was about a four percentage point differential between people with college graduates, college degrees, and people who had no high school degrees. That differential is now at about 9%, and it does not appear that it will change. So, high school graduation, more than ever, a critical factor, and in many cases, a college diploma is also helpful. Don't want to overstate that, however. There are many points in between that are important to the new economy. So, there are five goals in the CREDC's new plan, and I am not going to go into them in great detail, but mostly talk about what we're doing. The first is to grow the information technology and software sectors. And that's a challenge in our part of the world, because we don't really have a good handle on who's here. One of the first things we're going to do is to create an event called a Hack-a-thon, which really doesn't have anything to do with hacking, but it gets people's attention, I guess. This is the type of event that's been done in other cities around the U.S. And it's a 24 to 36-hour event, where we're trying to get people who are doing software, web design, gaming, whatever it is, at home, out to an online event, lots of caffeine, and they'll be working on software solutions for nonprofits, education entities, things like that. But finding out who's here, and then making more of them through networking, connecting them with other firms, finding out what kinds of industries they're working for, is a really important step. But also, we think we have some unique assets in downtown Vancouver that will attract that industry from other places in the region, specifically Portland, where we think there are probably folks who are now doing business in the Pearl, who eventually are going to look for a place to live where they can raise their families. There are not a lot of places for families in the Pearl District. And so, the Fort Vancouver National Site offers a lot of inexpensive and quite interesting space, where we could kind of build a little colony there. We also anticipate that will happen in other parts of the region. There's another firm in downtown Vancouver called Gravitate that is starting up an incubator for related industries. They will offer reduced rent to people who have businesses that are synergistic with theirs. We think we will see that happen in different places in the region. And all of that is privately funded. And anytime you have a question, or please feel free to break in. We also want to leverage our assets from WSUV and Clark College. There are a lot of different ways to do that, but we know that if we're talking about a knowledge economy, we've got people with a lot of knowledge, that we can do things like the traditional technology transfer, where you try and take things that are being researched at the university and turn them into a commercial product. It's probably going to be easier to research what kind of, to connect their research with companies who are already here and have them embark on joint research together. To that end, this year, we're cataloging all of the different types of expertise available at WSUV. And then, as we go out and talk with existing companies, we'll be asking about if there are any areas that they may see some synergies between themselves and the university. A great example of that kind of work has been Enlight. You might be familiar with them. They're over in, near Costco, or older Costco, well, outside Vancouver, within the county. And they have researched a number of their products jointly with the university, saves them money, provides the university cutting-edge technologies to work with. Every time the university adds new faculty people, we also inherit new areas of expertise that our local firms can benefit from. We also will be working with the universities to try and capture relationships with their foreign students. Every time a foreign student completes one of our universities or community college, we have a friend somewhere else in rural, who at some point may be bringing us business. Finally, helping support the universities' investments in STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math, and also supporting our K-12 school districts in those disciplines is an important part of the plan. And for that part, we rely heavily on Southwest Washington Workforce Development Council. The third goal is to make Clark County a hub for international investments. And in the past, when most people think about CREDC, what they've thought about is business recruitment. It surely gets the most press. Everybody likes to talk about who's coming to town. I'd like to clear that while business recruitment remains very important to us, it's not the main dish any longer. So, we will be working with the Port of Vancouver, because they work with many companies that have shipping relationships, also with the other ports who have companies who have parent or subsidiary operations overseas, forming relationships with them and doing a very targeted type of recruitment. In the past, most of our international recruitment has been related to trade shows and what I kind of think about is people waving their arms around, hoping that we can attract the attention of a company overseas. We will try to be much more targeted than that, have those relationships before we take any trips anywhere. We already have, through the Port of Vancouver, a couple of connections of companies in Asia that are interested in potentially putting plants here, so we're pretty excited about that. We also will participate with Greater Portland Inc., which is the metropolitan area business recruitment entity for our region. They will be bringing business prospects to look at the whole region. They say they are Switzerland, they are neutral about where a business lands, and that they will include Clark County in their repertoire, and we hope that that turns out to be a good This is goal four, enhance business vitality through targeted recruitment expansion and entrepreneurship, really the bread and letterwork of the CREDC, particularly business expansion. We have a target list of 100 companies that we want to see during the year. We have already, by the end of April, have hit about 60 of them, and we're always adding to the list, so I'm sure we'll wind up somewhere north of 100. Right now, we're also specifically targeting companies who are interested in being in the aerospace supply chain, because we know that Boeing is growing a lot this year, as are other aerospace companies, and we want to make the most of those companies who are here. Entrepreneurship, we also have the PubTalk events, if any of you are interested in those. There is one this Wednesday night. We do it every other month, to put together budding entrepreneurs with people who want to make those financial investments in companies and others, folks who want to be connected to those entrepreneurs. We usually get about 150 people out, and it's been a very helpful event. So far, we've had 11 firms capitalize through that, so it's not just a party. We do a lot of vetting of those companies and connecting them with resources prior to the time they give their business pitch to the investors, so it represents a pretty significant line of work for us. In the area of business expansion, some of the things we're doing in addition to working with aerospace companies is working with small companies who want to export. We're working, the Brookings Institute has put together an export package for the Portland metropolitan area, and we are part of that. And a great example of that work has been, we got a call from a company about six weeks ago, and he said, "You know, I have a machining firm, and it's me and my son and my daughter who work in the shed behind my house. And I just got a call from a company in India, and they want to buy half a million dollars of parts from me, and I don't even know where to start." So, our staff took a team out there. Within a few days, they helped the guy get his passport, he had an attorney, he had an accountant, and the next week, he was in India negotiating the deal. He came home with the deal, and now we've been working on getting him the financing and other things necessary, and he's also looking for new staff. So, it's a pretty exciting kind of thing. That's the kind of work we hope to be doing much more of, and that's the kind of work that really happens by word of mouth. Now, there are a variety of target industries countywide, and some of them are kind of hazy, meaning you can fit a lot of different things in those buckets. So, technology services, which would include our software, web, computer engineering, data processing, all those things that serve a variety of industries. Technology products, we've seen a lot of medical devices. About half the products capitalized through PubTalk so far have been in the medical device field. Energy production, semiconductors is part of technology products. Most of our aerospace work is part of technology products. By the way, the aerospace firms that we're seeing so far have tended to be in the avionics field, so the electronics for aircraft. We're also looking at wealth management, to capitalize on the investments of Fisher Investment and many others that have been in this region for quite some time. We're beginning to see more companies come and cluster around those. We also have a burgeoning debt collection software minicluster, which we're considering part of wealth management. Got to collect your debts if you want to have the wealth. Agricultural processing is a clever way for us to include pulp and paper, along with other food processing in this region. That particular industry fills an important niche. They provide a lot of jobs per investment, and they fill, the jobs are for people who tend to have a lower skill level, although not exclusively, and we want to have a full spectrum of jobs in our region. Healthcare management is an industry to build on the new location of the Peace Health Shared Services Center. In the next few years, you'll see approximately 700 new jobs in our region from that center. Many of them will be people moving in, and many of them will be people who have been trained here. They'll be working in back office occupations that help you manage a whole health system. In the past, most of those were at each hospital. Now, all of those systems, Providence, Legacy, Kaiser, Peace Health, they are beginning to pull those together into centralized departments. And finally, logistics and distribution. Now, that logistics and distribution is why we existed in the first place. The Hudson's Bay Company came here because of our river. We added to that our airport, our interstate highways, and our railroads. Those will always be our bedrock industries. I've talked a little bit about aerospace suppliers first. We're going to grow our existing suppliers and look at working with companies who want to become certified to get into that Boeing supply chain. You might have read in the paper where we had, at one time, thought that we would trundle off to Wichita to recruit firms, where Boeing was closing down its plant. We've decided that really what we need to do is to understand our niches in aerospace, and then figure out who needs to be here to complement the companies who are already here, so that we can plan ahead, so we're not stealing workers or in any way tripping up our existing firms. And so, finally, developing the workforce is the last important part of that. We're also not just targeting Boeing, but there are many aerospace companies in the world who are growing right now. And probably, it's second and third-tier suppliers to those companies, so the suppliers to the suppliers that we're most often talking about. We have already, by the way, done an aerospace supply chain seminar. We had about 80 people come out for that, and we're following up with each of those people, and we are also following the people who called us and said they're interested, but they were unable to participate at that time. So, in Clark County, that's about 30 different firms. The last goal of this study is related to infrastructure, and you may be aware that last fall, we did a lands-for-jobs study, simply trying to look at if we wanted to recruit or expand a lot of companies here, do we have the land available to do it? And is the land in any condition for development? And it was pretty discouraging, frankly. We did this as a parallel study with Portland. Portland did their study first, but they looked at, we looked at sites of 20 acres or more, they looked at 25 acres, I don't know why. And we put our land in tiers of how available is that land. Our top tier were companies that you could begin to move dirt in zero to 18 months. Portland's top tier was zero to six months. Principally, the difference in that for us was permitting times related to state permitting, which is a very serious concern that I'll talk about a little bit more in a minute. In this study, we found that we have 57 sites, well, we have 13 sites of 20 acres or more that could be ready within 18 months. And there's a map of those in here, a little tiny map. There are 57 additional sites that require very significant investments of infrastructure, which is partly where you all come in, in order to make those available. Of the 13 parcels in the first tier, only two of them are owned by a single entity. The rest all have multiple owners, some of which may want to sell and some might not. So, this study is a snapshot in time. We're getting new information all the time. Things come and go. So, for example, there's been significant movement on the Steigerwald property at the Port of Kamiswaschuggal. That's probably moved from an 18 to 36-month prospect up into the first tier in that time. So, the work we're going to do around this is we're going to continually update the inventory and look at how do we align resources and potentially pre-permit some of those sites. How far can we go with getting the State Department of Ecology and Army Corps of Engineers to say, "Yes, you can do this on this kind of a site, and you can do this part of it in advance"? We want to find out how far we can get there. We know that in order to be competitive, particularly with our partners to the south, that we have to promote regulatory timeliness and predictability. So, that's been a big, big problem in our state. And we are working, in the not-too-distant future, should have a list of six suggestions for folks who are running for office at the state level about things that need to change related to those policies. Changing the Army Corps of Engineers is, I believe, above my pay grade, so that probably won't be happening anytime soon. We will be looking to work with all the governments on land use planning related to industrial and commercial land as the next GMA process rolls out. We want to make sure that we, you know, we kind of have this breathing space where home building isn't an insatiable appetite. And while we have this breathing space, to talk about how many jobs do you want in your community, and what's it going to take in order to begin to get those jobs for your tax base. And here's the map. So, you can see this yellow down here in Waschuggal, that's the Steigerwald property. So, that should probably be covered green if we were doing this report today. There are a few, there's only one heavy industrial site of those 13 that are available. It's in the Port of Vancouver. We probably need to have more availability for heavy industry as well. The largest number of relatively ready sites are around the Ridgefield area. There's one in Battleground that you see there in green. They believe they've got another property up there where they've annexed into the urban growth boundary, some more land. Now, we only looked, by the way, at properties within existing urban growth boundaries and that were zoned commercial or industrial. So, we're not weighing in at this time on other zoning. All the area you see in red requires tremendous investment, whether it's a sewer, or a road, or both, in order to make it viable for investment. So, we're trying to promote the idea of economic development as a team sport. And my favorite story about this, and apologies to those who have heard it several times, is one of my former board members, when I was at the Workforce Council, she was at a funeral in Battleground, and she was sitting at the funeral lunch next to a gentleman, and they were talking about what they were doing. And he was saying, he was busy looking at sites in Portland to develop a distribution center for a certain product. But by the end of the funeral lunch, he was only looking in Clark County, and he had signed a intent, a letter of intent for a lease in Vancouver. I've sat at luncheons and other affairs recently, and I have been chatting with the person next to me, said, "Have you ever considered moving your firm to Clark County"? And the answer has surprisingly often been yes. And the answer is often yes, but we couldn't find the right site. So, we will be pursuing talking to folks like that, and what I want to encourage is for each of you to ask similar questions, that you meet people throughout your day. I met one at a baby shower at my house not too long ago, who told me that his company was very interested in moving to Clark County. They were tired, they all lived here, they were tired of commuting across the river. So, your insights and your relationships are really what's going to get us there. And finally, I want to thank you for your investment in the CREDC, and to know that we are available to come and talk with you about this formally, formally or informally, anytime you like. And by the way, we have been working closely with Paul Dennis at the Kamiswaschuggal Economic Development Association. We pitch projects back before. He's been a tremendous help. He's a very talented individual, and we really enjoy working with him. And it's helpful for us to have someone who can unabashedly advocate for this. And Mayor Gard is on our board, and helping keep us informed without the interests of this president.
Lisa, thank you very much for the presentation. Do we have comments, questions from councilmembers? Kind Joe?
Unemployment local perspective, you mentioned that, I think you quoted 30 to 35% higher here in Clark County. Did you just have a bullet point on the why Clark County, and I missed it, possibly?
You didn't miss it. Some of it is, we don't fully understand all of it. Some of it is, we don't fully understand all of it. There was even a time about a year ago when there were more unemployment claims for Clark County residents based on Oregon employers than Clark County employers. But we have no idea why exactly. We did have an outsized helping of the home building industry. So for the, we had more of it for the entire metropolitan area than most of metropolitan area. We also have historically had a much larger percentage of our population in the manufacturing industry. And those lower skilled manufacturing jobs have gone overseas or have been automated. So we know those two double whammies. We're not real clear on the rest of it, frankly. The largest cohort of people who have exhausted their unemployment insurance have been people in clerical and administrative occupations. So we, you know, Clark County, people, we didn't see a lot of plant closures, but we saw pretty much every government and every firm getting slimmer. So I think we just got hit from all angles.
And then, I'm not sure, let me find my note. Something on this page that says countywide target industries spurred a question. I have a special needs 22-year-old young adult son, very physically capable, and he's part of DVR and he has a job coach, just struggling. Nobody is hiring that segment. Do you have any input?
Well, we have a very close relationship with Southwest Washington Workforce Development Council. We're located in the same offices. I led that organization for the last 10 years.
I heard you say that, yeah.
We
That's great.
Have a very strong commitment to making sure that our jobs are not only jobs in terms of numbers, but jobs for the people we live with, our neighbors. That segment of the population has been the hardest to employ throughout the recession. There's not a magic bullet, I wish I could tell you there was. I think that our concentration of looking at the whole spectrum of jobs in the region from low skilled to super skilled will help there. But there's also a big part of the economy that we have, that we don't target, and that's, for example, retail, because that comes when you bring, after you bring the other jobs. And there's a pretty large percentage of the population that will work in those jobs as well. What we do pledge is that every time we bring jobs in, we connect them with WorkSource and with the BVR is, as you know, one door away from WorkSource. And we'll try and make sure that the people who live here have the first and best access to those jobs.
Great, thank you.
Dave?
I noticed on the slide, manufacturing versus other sectors in Clark County, that government and education are growing when others are sort of waffling along there. Why is that?
That's what I was trying to explain about the slide I don't have, which is precisely why we put this slide in.
It is here though, in front of us.
It's not packaged.
Do you want to, do you want to see it?
Yes.
There's actually an extra packet here. And it's on the bottom of page three.
Sector growth and perspective.
Right. Sector growth and perspective shows all of these other industries are flat based on population growth. So this is jobs per 100 residents. So this sector, which I can't read upside down, is growing slightly.
Professional, business services.
Government and education are flat based on 100, actually gone down a little bit. Transportation and all these others are flat except manufacturing going way down. This chart is just about raw numbers. So if Clark County had not grown over the last however many years,
30.
We would have, that chart would look different. Does that make sense to you?
So it's based on the growth?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Joyce?
Are our educational facilities keeping up or preparing for the jobs that you're talking about coming in?
You know, again, we work very closely with the Workforce Development Council. And I'm actually much more comfortable talking about that one than mine right now. They sponsor a variety of programs and are networked with others. So for example, N-Connect is a program that was started by Scott Keeney at Enlight. And they provide mentors to work with the advanced placement classes so that those kids are talking with real professionals and learning about how those industries actually work, not just being an astrophysicist in theory. I mean, he has an astrophysicist at his company who talks about having no idea what workers might do with that degree. So it's trying to keep those kids turned on and inspired and to get more B and C students to undertake that rigorous curriculum. They also work to place young people in internships in occupations related to science, technology, engineering, and math. So that could be anything from accounting to semiconductors to carpentry, which takes a whole lot of math, to, again, to get young people interested and to understand what people do all day in those jobs. N-Connect also runs a series of, they work with companies and they get kind of a menu of, here are the types of things where industry can get involved with the schools. And then the schools can go online and say, we want someone from this company to come out and talk to our students or to do a tour or whatever that activity might be. So that's one little example. We also, the Workforce Council works closely with the districts to try and talk about STEM in general. We right now have a small group that has been convened by some of the school districts and the colleges to try and coordinate all the millions of different STEM programs that are out there right now and take a look at what do we really need? What do we need to make more of what we've got? How do we be sure the smaller districts are included? EST 112 does a lot of that programming. So, and finally, we've committed to supporting the investments of those school districts into those disciplines to make sure it happens. And I don't want to make it sound like it's a one-note project. We know that communication skills are probably as important as technical skills in the national economy of work and that frankly, many of the new STEM occupations also require healthy doses of art. So it's a, it's the full package of education.
Thank you.
I'm fine. Any questions from the staff side? Lisa, thank you very much for being here with us tonight.
Thank you, Adam. I hope to come back and talk about number six months or something.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, moving into new business, community development, adopting a resolution for the BPA I-5 corridor reinforcement project.
Thank you, Your Honor, Council. At our April 23rd work session, we had a presentation regarding the Bonneville Power Association's I-5 corridor project, which is to bring a 500-kilovolt power lines, new power lines through from Castle Rock all the way down through to the Troutdale. And one of the things that we talked about in relation to that, of all those segments, all of them lead through Camas and Washugal, urban growth boundary, as well as our city limits. At that work session, we talked about the efforts that Camas has undergone in presenting to, or requesting that Bonneville look at alternatives to the siting of those projects or those segments and as far as location and the possibility of undergrounding. Council, we discussed that we share those same concerns and issues related to the 500-kilovolt line and that we would look at a resolution that would reinforce Camas's request as well as make our own request to Bonneville to look at alternatives through their environmental impact statement. The draft resolution before you gets after that and it makes those requests on your behalf. And I understand that after the April 23rd presentation, that Liz Clump with BPA provided the council with some schematics of what the right of ways would look like. And Liz is here this evening if you have further questions related to that. But basically, the recommended action for next week will to read the resolution by title only and to pass and post.
Any questions from council? David?
Mitch, they've said that it would cost, BPA has said that it would cost 10 times as much to underground the utilities as stream overhead. Do we have any idea of what that means in terms of the price per kilowatt hour?
Not, I don't. I'm not sure if Liz has that or not.
I don't.
Because it seems to me that spread over the, it's a substantial amount of money, for sure, but spread over the service area of all the customers that use BPA power, I would think that the impact on kilowatt hour, the price per kilowatt hour would be pretty minimal. And that, I'd like to know that because it seems to me to be a good way to go in spite of BPA's objection. And if you can help us with that, I sure would appreciate it.
I'll see what I can do.
It's just a key piece of information to help us with the decision-making process. Thank you.
Other questions from council? Thank you, Mitch. Moving to the Public Works Department, we've got a professional services agreement with Wallace Engineering for the engineering services for the Campin Creek Culvert Project
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, we have actually two professional service agreements before council tonight. The first one is Campin Creek Culvert Design. The second one will be 32nd and Addie Street Improvement. So we might as well just get started with the Campin Creek Culvert Design. As you're looking at this slide here, it's a little dark right now, but this is right there at J and 31st Street. Some of you might not be too familiar with the flooding that goes on there. Usually in the rainy season, it's two, three times a year that we have some flooding in that area. So this professional service agreement with Wallace Engineering will help us get some design work done to improve these culverts. And this is in our facility plan for stormwater as well. Here's another shot looking down Campin Creek, if you're looking south there. And this is right across from the high school. And then right here is usually where it overtakes J Street and runs across J Street or down J Street and then into the golf course. These pictures were taken in January of this year. You can see the project limits there. There's actually three culverts that we're going to replace. On M Street is the first one. And then there's a driveway culvert there in the middle. And then another one down there that goes under J Street. You can see the blue line there, which is Campin Creek runs all the way through here. So those three culverts are the ones that are getting overwhelmed. We also have some, obviously, the design work is going to be project management work. They're going to design the culvert sizing because there's some modeling that needs to be done. And then permitting requirements, we have NIBA, SEPA, MASH, state environmental planning. We have, construction will occur in August. So that's what we're looking at. We have some in-water work in August that we have to perform. That's our driest time of the year and the environment, environmental permitting actually requires us to do the work in August. So, and that's the State Environmental Policy Act and then the National Environmental Policy Act that we have to provide by. So with that, our recommended action will be to authorize the mayor to sign the Wallace Professional Service Agreement for the Campin Creek Culvert Project and just like open it up for any questions you may have at this time.
Some of this problem is due to the rapid runoff. Is there anything off the top of your head that we can do upstream to kind of smooth out the flows?
You know, not really. And you know, any development that occurs, we do have retention facilities that are built for any new development. There are some old developments that probably contribute to the runoff. But if you look up Campin Creek, if you look just north of there, I kind of did that today. I looked at Google map and just kind of went back. I mean, you can see on this map here how this is all just, this is all drainage for Campin Creek right here. So there's a tremendous amount of water that comes through there. I don't know what we could do upstream to tell you the truth. For some reason, it just gets more and more. And I think really what's contributing to it is the stream bed is filling up with debris and gravel. So if we open up those culverts and maybe put some fox culverts in it, we'll gain some capacity there.
Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? Okay. I think we're moving on from that one to the PSA for pedestrian improvements at 32nd and Addie.
Thank you, Mayor Gard. Yes, this is 32nd and Addie sidewalks. I think we talked to council previously about our CDBG grants, and those are community development block grants. And this is, this is one project that will benefit from the CDBG grant. If you look at this photograph here, this is, this is looking south there on 32nd Street. And you can see where there is no sidewalk on this side. There's quite a bit of pedestrian traffic that walks both north and south along there. And I'm just going to show a few more pictures real quick. This is another photo, and this is looking north on 32nd Street. And then looking south on 32nd Street again. Another little path there, you can see. And there's another one on 32nd. Then this one is on Addie Street as well. And another one from Addie Street, so you can see how there is no sidewalk in this area. I'll show you. So this slide will show you a little bit of where we need the connectivity. This is that piece on Addie Street we just looked at. And we do have sidewalk all along here. So this will connect all the way to here and then this sidewalk will connect all the way to Addie Street and then down towards the park. This was a second or a third option that we had. We didn't have enough funding to get this site completed. There are some spots where there is no sidewalk. There is some spots where there is sidewalk on the north side of Addie as well. And we'll go after some more CDBG money to get this completed in the future.
On the east end, does that go all the way to where that park is, the apartment buildings?
Yeah, it goes all the way down. So this is a CDBG grant that we have for this project. And then we also, we like this project because it ties into our 32nd Street improvements, ties into our railroad crossing improvements as well. And you can see this here where we have the railroad crossing there at 32nd Street and how there is no sidewalk on the crossing. There is on the other side, but not on this side. And then, you know, this is, this is important for connectivity for the residents on the south side of the tracks to get over to the shopping center and do their shopping.
Very.
Before the Safeway. Before the Safeway. So with that, our recommended action is to authorize the professional service agreement with Wallace Engineering for designing the 32nd Street Addy sidewalk improvements. And do you have any questions on this particular PSA?
Dave?
Jim, would you refresh my memory for me? What portion of this is covered by CDBG grant and what portion of it by city funds?
Yes, $105,000 is community development block grant funds. And there's another $90,000 that would come from our transportation fund.
Okay. If I remember correctly, that's in the budget for this year.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Those are part of the funds that we moved over from reserves into that transportation improvement fund.
If I remember.
Other questions from council?
Jim, thank you. What was, I'm sorry. What was the timing again? When is this going to?
This should, this should be on the fast track if we get the professional service agreement signed. We should get this work done in the summertime of this year, so before next year, we're hoping. You know, we've got that weather window. If it gets too cold, it's difficult for sidewalk, but we should have it done by the end of the year.
Great.
Thank you, Jim. Okay. Finance Department. Jennifer's got a couple of items for us. Resolution on contract and agreements, approval thresholds and procurement policies. Why can I not read that?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the things that, look at that, and already questions.
Good job, Jennifer.
We ask her to be brief, but.
One of the things that we've been working on in the Finance Department is looking at how to be more efficient and effective and serve the citizens of the council more, again, efficiently and effectively. So one of the areas that we dove into was the contract and agreement authority and possibly delegating some authority to the mayor or his designated. In the past, we have brought all contracts and agreements forward to council regardless of dollar thresholds for final approval before signing or basically authorizing the mayor to sign. What we've done is we've researched a few other cities. One of the things that I saw, obviously, that this is efficient, effective city, or statewide, various cities have different thresholds. So that's one of the things we wanted to discuss with you tonight. So basically, authorizing the mayor or his designated up to a certain threshold to approve those contracts and enter into those contracts and agreements without bringing them forward to council for formal approval. So basically, if a contract such as the two tonight were under $40,000, the mayor would have had authority to sign those without bringing those forward, as long as it was within the appropriated budget. It wouldn't give us any extra authority for additional budget. We would still have to come forward for that approval. So what I thought we would start with was looking at what we currently do, and you'll see under existing Wash Dugle, it's all council. We bring everything forward, even if it has no financial impact. Hopefully, you can see that. It starts with inter-local agreements, goes to professional service agreements, maintenance contracts and service contracts, public works projects, settlement agreements, any other agreements. It's kind of the catch-all for anything that we didn't think of, and then lease agreements. I put our proposal in there, which for inter-local agreements, we are proposing that the mayor-designate could enter into those as long as they have no financial impact. If they had financial impact, we would bring those forward for formal approval. The rest are pretty much set at about $40,000. We got to that number very, very strategically by looking at what other cities did and said, oh, this looks like a good number. So it is flexible, is my point. If you don't like that number, we are open to talk about that. But it seemed like a good middle-of-the-road number that would catch a lot of those small contracts that don't need to come through council approval. With the public works projects, we kind of broke that into two areas. Again, we kept it with the mayor-designate up to $40,000, as long as it's within the budget. But then we went one step further with those and identified those projects that are specifically identified in the, in the budget, such as E Street was specifically approved and funded in appropriated budget in prior years. And if we were to have another project like that that was specifically identified, specifically funded, and approved as part of the budget, that authority to enter into the agreement would still, would be vested with the mayor and designated. Again, the normal AP process would still occur to where Finance Committee would look over all the expenditures. So it wouldn't be like it would just magically go away. It's still going to go through the normal procurement processes, bid law, all those types of things. It would just take that step of coming through for contract approval away and make it more efficient and streamlined. If you have questions, you can stop me. Settlement agreements, again, up to, oh, sorry?
Dave?
Dave?
Did you have a question? I looked away too far.
Yes, but I, as I think about it, I probably should wait till the end of your presentation. I'm sorry.
Mayor, settlement agreements, again, up to the 40. Other and lease agreements are all at the 40 or under. And again, that would all have to be within the approved budget still. For some perspective, I got various information from MRSC and DOE through some other cities' code. City of Tunnwater, for inter-local agreements, theirs all vote for council still. For professional service agreements, pretty much all their agreements, you can see it carries down. If it's less than $100,000 and within the budget, they've delegated authority away. So we were a little more conservative than the $100,000. No Tunnwater's just a little bit bigger than we are. City of Richfield, City of La Center, as long as it's budgeted, they've delegated all authority to their city manager or mayor, as the case of La Center. Lynwood has varying different levels, a population of 35,000. If there's no financial liability, inter-local agreements, American sign. And then again, they've got anywhere from 10,000 to 50,000. City of Vancouver, we went to the far extreme with the big dog, big city in the area. And they have delegated, from what I could find online, they've delegated all authority to the Finance Director, I believe, or designated. So they don't bring anything forward through the formal process like we do. Again, council still approves all the expenditures, but just from the contract entering side. And then Kirkland, I threw them in there as well. Their limit was about 50,000. So what we're proposing is we have a resolution attached that basically breaks out those thresholds for the first section. And then for the second section of the resolution, it directs me to make policies and procedures to ensure that bid law and all those things that I mentioned are being followed and that we have a consistent process in place and get those administrative policies put together. There's more detail in the resolution, assuming that it probably got read, and you may have lots of questions on that. One change that I did make on Exhibit A for contract and agreement approval thresholds, Item F, was a little unclear, so Dawn suggested some language play changes. So instead of saying settlement agreements involving a cost or fee of less than 40,000, I added not including retention of legal. So the not including was added to that to make it more clear. And then again, we've left authority to the mayor's discretion that if he feels a contract, even if it's within that authority of 40,000 or less, he can still bring it forward for formal council approval. That's about it. I also included a table to Exhibit A so that we could read and have a nice little fancy table. Along the lines with that resolution, we did have an ordinance repealing Section 3.74. Basically, that is a regurgitation of some bid laws and whatnot. It's not complete. It doesn't address all of our purchasing or contracting. So it seems easier to pull that out and then do the resolution to do it by administrative policy versus an ordinance where we have to codify it. That'll be cheaper as well, so we don't have to pay to run it through the code. I have an example. As I mentioned, the two agreements that we brought forward tonight would not have had come through council. We could have just done those administratively. And just for more perspective, out of the 27 agreements that I quickly counted on agenda bills year-to-date, about 14 of them fit the requirements of the 40,000 or less. So about half of them, we could have pulled off the agendas and had time to discuss other things or spend our time more wisely. So our recommended actions are to read the resolution and ordinance by title only, pass and post the resolution in the usual manner, and pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner. Questions?
Questions from council? Dave?
Seems to be my night in the batter's box. First of all, congratulations to the staff on putting this together in such short order. Nice going. It's a good, it's a good piece of work. I like it. Secondly, I like the idea of giving the executive the authority he needs to do the job. I don't like to see the executive coming hat in hand to the council all the time saying, "Mother, may I." On the other hand, I've got a concern here. In looking at this thing, I want to make sure that any expenditures are already in the budget. I don't want this to be a backdoor into the reserve accounts.
Correct. If it's appropriated, so we have, if we have $10 appropriated, we would still have to stay within that $10. So we, for instance, if the budget for the ERNR fund is $10, or the capital project is $10, this would allow us to do the contracting, meaning necessary, or we feel necessary to spend that $10, but we could not spend 12 without coming forward to council for a budget amendment.
Okay. I can live with that. Thanks very much.
Paul?
I really like being able to see the Campin Creek stuff. I agree that it's probably not necessary that we jump through all of the hoops of looking at the details of the contract. But just a couple of observations. I firmly believe it's part of my job to, as much as possible, understand what's going on in the city. And that includes the public works projects. And while I agree that I don't really need lots of detail on the contracts, I really, really, really would like to know when this kind of stuff comes up and what's being talked about. And along with that, just an observation, I think that the budget, the budgeting process and the budget itself is going to have to contain a lot more detail. Whereas we might budget some large number for ERNR, I think going forward, if we do this, I'm going to want to see a bit more detail about what it is that we're, that's in that budget. Are we talking about pickup trucks for public works? Are we talking about computers? What is it, rather than just seeing a number for the entire thing? So I just think that although I agree that these are things that the chief executive should be able to do within the budget, I also think it means that the budgeting process is going to need to have more detail and be, if frankly, a bit more excruciating for all concerned.
Yeah, let's take a look at that as we go through it. This year, on the two examples that you gave, I believe we already cull out all of those expenditures item by item for the different departments and what they're going to, whether they're police cars, whether they're BACOs, whether they're new phone systems, new computers, new laptops, any of that. I believe all that detail is already in there in the budget package itself. Matter of fact, there, in our budget, we typically, other than those things that are same as last year, this year, you know, the, the stuff that we do and do and do and do and do, anything in there that's an exceptional piece, whether it's a project, whether it's a piece of equipment, any of that type of stuff, is called out in those, those budget worksheets themselves. But if it's not in enough detail, let's make sure as we go through it that.
I have to admit, that level of detail eluded me this year, if it was there. So.
With the ERNR fund, we do have, we contracted with Mr. Lewis, and he put our plan in place for us. So we do have a replacement schedule available for all the, both general fund and utilities for equipment repair or replacement.
And, and the principal places that it comes to mind are things like ERNR and public works and those kinds of projects. And, and a whole lot of that detail is actually, for public works, is in the Transportation Improvement Plan or the Capital Budgeting Plan or, or something like that. So that, that's all there. And it, it's just a matter of, I'd like to be informed as well.
There's no doubt as we move into a policy like this, if, if the council is in favor of it, that it certainly needs to be not only understandable to you all as council members, you also have to be comfortable with whatever the process is, whatever the amount of detail is that you're provided with, whatever the thresholds are, all of that.
Thank you.
I think that's what I was going to ask. If we would still receive the information about the expenditure and what it's for, and like today, the 32nd and Addy, that's, I want to know that. So will we still get the information even though we don't have to vote on it?
I think that, we haven't specifically addressed that yet, but through the AP process, the expenditures would all be seen.
I think from what I hear, what I'm hearing is we would just need to make sure that we provide appropriate and timely updates to the council regarding projects that we're working on in workshop, there for informational purposes so that you're aware of what's going on. I think that's what I'm hearing in the feedback. It's not so much I want to continue to reserve the right to, to have a vote on that particular contract and authorizing the mayor to sign, but I don't want to lose touch with the programs and the work that's going on. And so we can provide information to you in an appropriate way so that you can be fully briefed on those.
The presentations are good. I mean, it's good information for us to, to have when we go out, to be able to know what's going on. So that part, I wouldn't want to lose.
Can I, Joe?
Yeah, I just want to chime in the same thing, especially being new. How long will I say that? It's really valuable to have the presentations. We appreciate them very much. I wouldn't ever want to lose touch with that. And he's not new over there, Mr. Greenly, still has the same opinion. You don't know what's, things move so quickly in a city. You don't know what's going on if you don't get information and details.
Well, I think that might be where the committee, the public works committee, might be more active as well, where we bring the information to the committee, and that way the committee is up to speed and knows all the projects going on as well, and then doing the updates with the full council.
Paul?
I don't want to be too pedantic about this, but I really think that the job of council is to be a trustee for the future of the city. And I'm, I'm a little concerned, what my worry is, that if we, if we're not really in touch with everything that's going on, it's no longer possible to think in, in the kind of timeframes that are necessary to plan for the city, whether it's the fact that it's going to take us another, at least 13 years to get the water use permit, to take the water out of the test wells we drove, what, four years ago at Steigerwald? Those kind of planning horizons require a lot of imagination, and that imagination needs to be fueled by exactly the kinds of things that, that the slideshow that Jim did on Campin Creek and on the Addy Street project were wonderful. And I agree that, for me, workshop is the appropriate venue for that. I don't really need to see that and vote on it in, in a formal council meeting.
Other questions, comments, thoughts about threshold limits? Any questions in regards to the ordinance that will be, are asking to repeal? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, we're now at that point, the second opportunity in the meeting for any members of the public that would like to address council.
of the public that would like to address council. Good evening, Marilyn.
Good evening. Sorry. I had whooping cough, and I want you to know that was in February. It does not go away. I'm concerned about survival, I think. We have an old and beautiful town, and I think that one of the, I can see that one of the treasures that I value are trees, are starting to be taken away by people who may not necessarily care a lot about them. It takes a long time to make a tree. You don't just go out and manufacture one. And the tree that lives wherever you are was planted by two or three generations before you. In the short time that I had lived on G Street, I watched Mike Green take down approximately twenty-some beautiful trees, several of which he did not have to take down, and I stood there crying at him, and he laughed at me and continued to take them down. The lady across the street said, "You know, my house used to be so comfortable, and now that the trees are gone, it's really hot in the summer." Trees don't belong to just the people who buy the land. Trees belong to the town. And I'm asking you to consider a rethinking of that piece of property as belonging to us and not to an individual. I don't know the exact street number, but a man around seven hundred and something on G Street bought a house, immediately cut down a big, big, big maple tree. It took days to cut it down. It was so big. And then he put the house up for sale. So I'm asking myself, what's the logic in this? I, I buy the house, I cut down the tree, I put the house up for sale. Why did I do that? I mean, you figure that one out, and I can't, I can't do that. Now, the wonderful walnut that was in the corner of G Street and where the self-storage is, we used to go every fall and collect the walnuts. He took it down. I asked the man who was cutting it down, why? Because he only wants it gone. Well, I keep repeating, it isn't his tree, as far as I'm concerned. He took my walnuts, he took the squirrel's walnuts, he took the shade that was on that corner. The corner is now nude and quite unattractive. Maybe he'll do something to make it lovely, but right now, and if we don't start thinking about the trees as being part of the town, we're not going to have any trees to consider anymore. It will just be naked washugal. Please, I don't know how you're going to do that, but please start thinking about protecting one of our most valuable assets. This is a nice place to live, and it isn't Arizona.
Thank you, Marilyn. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I have a few questions and concerns about the special meeting this Thursday, May seventeenth. Just started, one of the concerns, as of this afternoon, it wasn't posted on the city's website.
Name and address?
There was going to be a meeting.
Oh, John, can you give us your name and address?
Pardon?
Can you give us your name and address?
John Wagner, three six seven one oh, Southeast Twenty First Street, Washington.
Sorry, John, didn't catch your last name.
Wagner.
Wagner, okay, thanks.
I did make an inquiry, and I thank Mr. Scott for responding to me, that the call for the special meeting was technically legal. But one of the questions I have is, on May seventh, we were in this chamber, and there was no comment made about that, and yet a notice went out on Wednesday morning, which would indicate to me that four members of this council, sometime between Monday evening and Wednesday morning, decided to have a special meeting and made a notice of that through I would question, why wasn't that discussed Monday? And why was it four members of the council? When I come to these meetings, for instance, tonight, we hear about public works or finance, and we get to hear your comments. I really enjoy hearing your comments, and that's how we learn what you do. You were elected by us, we gave you our trust, we get to come here, even on beautiful sunny days, and listen to what our government does. It's transparency. I'm a big proponent of transparency. If we get to see what you do, whether we like it or not, at least we get to see it. This call for the special meeting, I didn't get to hear what any comments were made by any of the four people who were there, and certainly the other people didn't get to make comments, nor did the public get to make a comment on the need of this. Now, the RCW and the Open Records Act does have a provision for special meetings. In that provision, although this was technically, because it was implied that you could do this, as I read that, the special meeting should be reserved for an emergency, or something that couldn't really wait. As I understand, this meeting Thursday is not something that couldn't wait, that we could have discussed it May seventh, we could have discussed it tonight, but that never happened, and we, the public, did not get a chance to hear your comments, nor did we get a chance to weigh in on how the public views this. Do we need to have this meeting? What's the point of this meeting? What's going to happen? There are other issues. The agenda of that meeting does not follow the protocol. How it was sent notice is not the protocol of this city. So I guess my comment tonight is, I would like to hear from the two council members who were a party to that calling the special meeting, to kind of explain, I would like to hear an explanation of why it couldn't have been done in public, what was so important that it had to be done right after that meeting and yet released on Wednesday. And I would really encourage the council to work together as a council. There are seven people here, so we can't have a tie. We know you're not always going to agree. We're not always going to agree, but we get to hear you, and we get to hear your discussion, and we get to come up here in front of you and tell us how we feel about things. That's good government. That's transparent government. And we started doing this, where we have meetings with partial members of the council, away from the public. I believe that is setting a bad precedent, and I don't believe in the interest of good government, transparent government, that's a direction I would not like to see this council go. I've been observing this council. I like the way you interact. I like your discussion, your questions. It helps us see what you're doing, going down this road. I think it's a bad thing, and tonight, if you would, I'd like to have the two who are present answer at least those two questions, why it had to be done then, and why it couldn't have been the full council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Are there any other members of the public that wish to address council? Going to mayor's report, I've got three items for you this evening. One is a reminder of this week's chamber luncheon, Thursday, I believe at eleven thirty, at Camas Meadows Golf Course. The, the topic and the speakers are the mayor of the city of Camas and myself. We've been asked to do a, if you would, a state of the cities presentation, I guess. So Scott and I are, are working on some information that we'll have available there, but certainly encourage any of you that may be available Thursday afternoon, or, excuse me, Thursday at eleven thirty, the, the chamber luncheon. Also, just a reminder, on the Association of Washington City's annual meeting, we are still looking for a couple more voting members for the annual meeting itself, from four to five thirty PM on Thursday, June twenty-one. So if you'll be attending, and you know you'll be attending that day in those hours, certainly let us know, so that we can get the information on who those delegates are to AWC.
What was the date again?
It's June twenty-first, Thursday, June twenty-first. And then final item, second final item. Jim, you had a debris day on Saturday. I understand it was quite successful.
Yes, sir. We had, like I said, like the mayor said, debris day on Saturday. We actually had two debris days this year. The first one was previous Saturday, and then last Saturday, the twelfth, we had one. And that was for all the citizens in the city to bring their, boy, you could bring in chemicals, you could bring in computers, you could bring in garbage, whatever it was, but this was our, I believe this was our third annual debris day, and we were hoping to get a good turnout. We, we did get a good turnout. There were people lined up all the way down C Street, all the way down to River Road from our offsite or so, some people waiting quite a while to get their debris in. So that, that was a huge success. We should get some of the numbers and totals as far as tonnage and yards taken away, and how much hazardous materials and things like that in the next couple of weeks. They usually track all that, so we'll get a report on that in the next couple of weeks. And I can shoot that out to the council as well.
That'd be great. Thank you, and thank you to your entire staff down there that were there to, to assist on the, on Saturday. The last item I have is in regards to the, the meeting that's been called for this Thursday, and I know Dave and I still have some information that we want to make sure that we have correct, so that we get the proper postings, everything out on those. So, Dave, I'm going to turn this one over to you.
Thank you, mayor. We thought it might be helpful to just kind of walk the council through what's in your adopted rules of procedure, so that, you know, there'll be real clarity around just some of the technical details about doing a special meeting. So just very briefly, I'll do that, and then I believe, mayor, you wanted to have a conversation about the agenda following that. So, as I'm sure you know, there's a statutory provision that provides for either the mayor or a majority of the council to call a special meeting, and that's in Title forty-two of the RCW, it's in the open public meetings area. And your rules basically mirror that provision in saying that four of you, since we are a body of seven, four of you are required to do that. And indeed, that's the case that we have for this current special meeting. There are four council members that are calling for the special meeting. The statute is silent upon, and your rules are silent upon, what it, what it means to call a special meeting. How does an individual council member indicate that they're calling for a special meeting? And MRSC, who provides us legal advice, has addressed that question in the past, and has some template information available. It's, it's very flexible, but it does require that individual council members communicate individually back to the, the city clerk, or us, basically, to let us know that you're calling for that. So at the beginning of the call for the special meeting, we didn't have that quite yet, and so we communicated with the individual council member, so that we could get that individual call, and that, everyone was very responsive, and that was greatly appreciated. That happened last week. And then in terms of notice for the special meeting, the statute and then your rule talks about the clerk, who provides all notices for city meetings, would provide that notice. We have yet to provide that notice. We still have plenty of time to do that for the Thursday meeting, because of a pending conversation tonight about the agenda. So, pretty straightforward, special meeting, called by four members of the council or by the mayor. We need to hear from individual council members individually that the meeting is being called for and what, what it will be about. We, we got there pretty quickly, and again, appreciate everyone's responsiveness and that. That's very helpful. And there's, there is some ambiguity in your rules about what the general template of an agenda would be, not the topic of a special meeting, because that's, that's contained within the notion of calling a special meeting, there's a topic. But what's the general order for the agenda? Just a detail that we have to work through. Your rules are silent upon agendas for special meetings, but they, as you know, prescribe an agenda for regular meetings, and it's, it's been Don's advice to us that, in the absence of something precisely specific for a special meeting, you should follow the template of the regular meeting, and basically use that new business item as the placeholder for where the topic of the special meeting would be placed. So that's our general intent in putting out a notice tomorrow through the clerk for the meeting. Now, there was a press release that went out, so I think there's been awareness of a special meeting, and that that went out last week, so there's plenty of notice that's going out. We will check off that formality in terms of meeting your rules and have that clerk notice go out as soon as possible tomorrow morning. I think that covers pretty much the gist of it. It's pretty straightforward. And then, once, once that meeting is called, then it is, it is a meeting of the full council. The mayor presides per statute, and the topic of the special meeting will be undertaken, and that's what we're planning on for Thursday. With that, mayor, I guess I'd turn it back to you, just with that general entry into the agenda conversation, that our plan is to basically use your agenda template for your regular meetings, and under new business, the topic that the four members that were calling for the special meeting articulated would be placed in that area of the agenda. And I know there was some specific information around how the conversation might go and the types of questions that wanted to be explored during the conversation, and we can work that into it. And we'll do that.
Can I, Joe?
Could you repeat something? You said, the mayor runs the meeting?
Correct. Right. A special meeting of the council...
A special meeting.
A special meeting of the council is a council meeting, and statute provides that the mayor presides at all meetings of the council.
Any, before we start talking about agenda itself, any questions on what Dave has shared so far, as far as where we are on this thing? In regards to the agenda, Dave, Dave is correct. It, you know, it's one of those things, and it sounds like maybe there are some folks who may want to take issue with creating a new agenda for it. I guess my first comment would be to, certainly to the council, just as a reminder, if there are topics that you want brought up during meetings, different things that we need to do, items for agendas, any of that, we are certainly in a position to make sure that those come forth. You know, it seems like kind of a redundant reminder that city council meetings are your meetings, the city councils. They're not my meetings, they're not Dave's meetings, they're not Jennifer's meetings, they're not the public meetings, they're the city council meetings. Same thing with workshops. So in, in our policies and rules, we actually have laid out, you have laid out what you want for your agendas for meetings, whether they're workshop meetings, or whether they are city council meetings themselves. So that is the, the direction we'll be going with on Thursday. I still have a question in my mind, whether we're going to meet at six o'clock or seven o'clock. Six o'clock is the prescribed time for council meetings, and there was a lot of discussion last year, when we moved everything to six o'clock, that we didn't want to confuse the public and have one meeting at five thirty, but another meeting's at seven o'clock, and something else is at this time, and something's at that time. So, you know, I would, I would reiterate to council, you know, certainly it almost echoes Mr. Wagner's comments, anytime these things can be brought up in advance, it is unbelievably appreciated. At least two members of council, plus our, or staff, plus our city attorney, plus folks at municipal research, on and on and on, have been trying to not necessarily unwind what was started last year with, or last week with the press release that was sent out, but to at least make sure that we are legal and that we are covered. You know, in the, in the start of the, the press release that went out, it talks about a special meeting, special council meeting announcement, but then talks about a public forum, and it's described four or five different areas. So quite frankly, even when we got this at the same time everybody else did, we had no idea exactly what it was that anybody was even calling for. And I would also ask council members, doesn't really matter how you respond to my emails, as you get emails from staff trying to discern what it is we're trying to do, if you would, please be polite with the staff. Some of the answers that came back, quite frankly, are, are a little bit out of line if you read them just for the words that are put on there. I understand that there have been meetings... I understand that there have been meetings called in the past by the council. At least one that I remember that council called. There are rules for doing that. And all we all need to do is make sure and follow those rules and the procedures, whether they were laid out by yourselves as council members for the city or certainly whether they're laid out in state law. If we did it wrong before, it doesn't mean we get to do it wrong again. Two wrongs do not make a right. So, we're always going to err that side. So, given that, I believe our intent is tomorrow to go ahead and notice the meeting officially to all of the media that we have on a vast media list who have signed up specifically for that. I don't believe even the information that went out last week includes all those. They're certainly not on the email chain that we saw. And some of the stuff goes back, I know, two months. It looks like this has been under discussion by various members. So, we, again, even in releasing that information, press releases, information on meetings, we have to keep lists of all the people who have ever asked to be notified of what those are. So, tomorrow that will take place. The intent is that we will follow one of our regular council meetings, not a workshop agenda, but a council agenda. And as Dave said, fit the topic of discussion into the new business portion of it. That'll be the only item that will be up for discussion that evening. That's one of the things that you need to remember about special meetings is they're not a single topic meeting, but we have to actually declare what it is that that special meeting's being held for and what the topic of discussion is. I know in John's information that he sent out, I also want to make sure and clarify, and we did to the newspapers as well that it was sent to, it mentions in there that there will be no action taken. No business will be conducted. Well, in the start, it's an incorrect statement to begin with. You're certainly going to be conducting business if we do it correctly and if we're talking correctly with all of those nonprofit groups, the churches, our service organizations. I hope to heck we do a lot of business on Thursday. I don't know what the intent was behind that sentence in there and it wasn't explained to us. There certainly, on Thursday, you can certainly take votes. It is a meeting of the city council. It's not a workshop, it's a meeting of the city council. So, as long as you stay to those topics that are released out in the special notice, you certainly can undertake motions, seconds, and undertake votes. So, I just want to make sure that everybody understands the, kind of the rules that we're playing under when you start getting into those special meetings. So, without any additional questions or comments from council. Paul?
Yeah, I was not a party to any of these discussions. To describe myself as stunned and amazed when I got the email is maybe too kind. One of my great concerns is the phrase "faith-based." Anytime you go there, you're treading dangerous waters in terms of who you exclude and who you include. If the included list is too narrow, then you're running great risk of violations of federal law and discrimination. So, it seems to me that even if this were limited to faith-based, and I have no idea what that actually means, it would be crucial that all of the faith-based organizations in the area be invited, including the, actually, more than 100 people who meet in at least five different regular Sunday groups who are members of the LDS Church and the Friends and the Unitarians and the Congregational Church of Camas.
Of course, they're welcome.
If you notified anyone and you failed to notify them, it's a problem. So, and I frankly am not entirely, partially because I don't know what the word "faith-based" actually means. I mean, is goodwill faith-based? I don't know. Salvation Army probably is, but I would think that you, that need a little broader brush. That it's not just faith-based, but it's all of those organizations which are interested in providing community service. So, I would include also the Lions and the Rotary and the Children's Home Society. And I have no, I haven't even really thought who else there is.
We're, just to be clear, we're not, we are putting out a proper notice. The city is not necessarily contacting every organization that is known or unknown to us.
I understand that.
As Dale Rumpel would say, there are those things that we don't know that we don't know. But there is, there is an effort through the newspapers. And I, again, I sent out an email to the newspapers last week to let them know that, you know, everyone is invited, period. We'll also, you know, I think the meeting itself is a positive thing. You know, the more that we can get everybody involved is wonderful. And the outreach that Joanne and Trevor started last year, one of the first groups we started with was all of the churches, all the service organizations, you know, all the nonprofits that we know of in the community, that type of stuff. So, we could certainly add them to the, we have the contact information for everybody that they dealt with. So, that will certainly go out through those areas as well.
I'd be a lot more comfortable with that. I'm, I was just concerned that there was a short list that was invited.
I don't know who was invited. I have a feeling that the purpose was to be as inclusive as it could be, so.
Thank you for that.
And the other, the other thing, of course, that especially people who are relatively new to council, I think, don't understand how strict and at the same time broad the Open Public Meetings Act is or the Open Records Act. That these are laws which are, by all reports, unique to the state of Washington, go far beyond any other state. And to give you an idea of, at some of it is frankly quite insane to me, I admit. I heard of a case up on the Olympic Peninsula in which city council members were dinged for carrying on deliberations by way of letters to the editor which were published in the newspaper of record. That did not qualify as an open public meeting. That is stunning. And so, it's crucially important that anytime council members get together to discuss anything like an agenda or deliberations, the list of things that are considered business in Chapter 42 of RCW, there's a whole section on that. It's a long paragraph. And so, it, staff is there to help us on this. It's crucial that if it's to be done right and to keep yourselves and the city out of trouble, that we touch, that we use the staff to touch all of the bases and make sure that we do it right. That's it.
Okay, Joe.
Thank you. It's rather shocking to me to learn that something that seems so innocent and open to everyone has caused such a problem. Just as a little background, my pastor, Rich Blum, from Bethel Community, approached me and said, he said, he meets with numerous pastors in Camas-Washugal. And they, they're in fellowship together. They pray together, they study together, they encourage each other, they support each other. And that they had had a talk about, I think it comes probably with, suddenly Bethel now has a city council member in their church, possibly. Wow, we have a relationship with the city in a different way than we, than we as, you know, Bethel has ever had. So, we pastors would like to come to the city and say to you, city council and city of Washugal, how can we serve you? And that is the entire purpose of this agenda Thursday. Now, if procedure was wrong, Karen and I are like deer in the headlights going, okay, thank you, David. Thank you, Don, who, you have our back because we don't want to do anything unintentional. To talk about a faith-based, whether that's allowed or not, I mean, there's federal faith-based agencies out there established years ago. There's nothing wrong with meeting with the community that's faith-based. So I appreciate Mayor and Dave and Don and those of you that do know the rules and regulations that everything will be above board. That's exactly our intent. Our goal is to reach out to the community of Washugal because there's lots that can be done. And this is just another resource to tap into as the church community and all churches. There's not a specific church included and another one excluded. Which is why the term "faith-based" came up again, because of who initiated that. If this thing grows into something different, we're about ready to walk through that. And so, I appreciate the opportunity to have this meeting and communicate with the leaders of the churches of our neighborhoods. It's going to be good. Thank you.
Any other council? Dave?
I'd just like to reiterate my request to bring back the rules of the council for our reconsideration. There are rules in there that don't make a lot of sense to me. And I'd like to get them on the agenda as soon as possible so that we can review them. Our workshop agenda, obviously. Thank you.
Don, anything from your side?
No, I think it's been pretty much covered.
Okay.
Our rules need to be followed and we're getting there.
Is there, on the topic of timing, do, does anybody know if the 7 o'clock is a magical hour rather than our normal 6 o'clock start time?
I heard 7, but I
I just was told that 7 because there's a lot of working people involved. A lot of the pastors punch a clock. And, you know, by the time you get home to the kids and the dinner, and of course, that's true on every, everything council does. Again, I was not aware that meetings for council were set for 6:00 PM. It's kind of late in the game to change it right now, isn't it?
We haven't noticed the meeting.
The notice, that's true, but
We haven't noticed the meeting, so.
Well, that's true.
Nothing is official at this point.
I'm assuming the pastors would have to be flexible because they've all been, they've all talked about 7:00 PM. But it's neither here nor there.
Dave, any staffing-wise? I know we've got to have folks here to do recording and all that type of stuff. Is there, schedule-wise, are we fine?
We serve at the pleasure of the council, so we'll be here, ready to facilitate your meeting at whatever time you'd like to do it. We can do 7, we can do 6. I know, I know that when the council deliberated moving the starting time to a time that was sort of the average of the alternating weeks, that there was some concern about 6 o'clock being just sort of into that window of time where folks can get home and get here and it's not perfect. But I think it's a special meeting and it wouldn't be extraordinary in a special meeting context for the time to be different. There's no rule that says it has to be at 6. It's just what we've sort of gotten used to. So, I would perhaps suggest that given, even though there wasn't a formal official notice, there has, there was some notice that's been out there a little bit, that we might want to stick with that in this case just to avoid any confusion and make sure that all folks that want to participate can.
Cool. Do we have any other questions that we needed to have answered in order to get the notice out tomorrow?
I don't believe so.
We've covered pretty much everything.
I think it's really pretty straightforward, so.
Okay. Awesome. Enough on that one for me. Again, I think the purpose for the meeting, the topic, I think, is a wonderful one. Just a reminder, the more we can work with the staff to put these things through, we don't have to go back through things here, there, and wherever. So, that part is always appreciated. Items from council, council comments? Paul?
I just wanted to underline the Debris Day thing. I, this is the third one that I've participated in. I needed to go down and see some people at the yard about quarter till 10. And when I did, the line was already backed up almost to City Hall on C Street. And so I then turned to go down Main Street so I could come in the back way. And the line went around 22nd Street and then east on Main Street all the way to, not quite to 24th, but beyond 23rd. When I showed up in line at 11:45 in the morning, the lines were not quite as long, but almost long enough that I got there at 11:45, I pulled into the yard at three minutes after 1:00. So, it was I have no idea what the tonnages were, but I know they went through, what, four 40-yard dumpsters in, by 10:30 or 11:00 in the morning? And that's probably twice what we did last year. So, it was, it was an amazing event. And then on a very light note, for anybody who likes to do such things, if you go out to the Lower Cape Horn Trail, what they locally call the Delphinium, actually, or Larkspur, are in fabulous bloom. You don't have to walk 75 yards off the highway. If you turn east on 14 from Washugal River Road, it's almost exactly eight miles. If you see a guardrail on your left-hand side that's brown instead of silver, you just missed it. There's a, there's a wide spot in the road, there's plenty of place to park. And the trail starts just before the guardrail on the right-hand side starts. You can see the Delphiniums. It's a narrow trail. Kids might not be a problem for the first 100 yards or so. But the further you go, the steeper it gets and the closer you get to the cliff. And it's a long ways down to the Columbia River below. So, I'm not sure that it's really a place for small children. But the Delphinium are in bloom and it is spectacular.
Thanks, Paul. Other items from council? Joyce?
Well, this Wednesday, the 5th Grade Hathaway Girls Project was finished. The girls graduated. And there were 23 girls. And it was a life-changing experience for the girls and those of us that mentored. And the parents were invited, or one parent was invited with the girls. And they came up and they were just so amazed to see in nine weeks' time the changes that had taken place in these young women. So, that was a wonderful experience for me. So, that was a wonderful experience for me. And Rotary will be doing it again next year for 5th grade girls at Hathaway and the 5th grade boys. So, it's a marvelous program, and you don't have to belong to Rotary to be a mentor. Anyone can do it. So, it's terrific.
Cool. It's a neat program. Other items? We're adjourned. Till Thursday at 7:00?